Call the meeting to order, please. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Thursday, July 16th, 2020. The time is 7:00 PM. Please call the roll.
President Salz.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Trustee Jisa.
Here.
Trustee Hannan.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Molina.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Haley.
Thank you very much. If you'll join us for the pledge. Thank you. If you'll give me a forbearance here, I can't have this on and see you at the same time. Every time I breathe out, I fog up. Just before we get started, a couple of things. This room, especially when the air conditioner is running, it's very difficult to hear one another. So please speak up if you're here for public comment. You're welcome to just speak from right where you are if you just want to do that, or you can go up to the podium with the microphone. We are implementing an additional level of safety procedure tonight because of the COVID-19 pandemic. So firefighter Johanna Mungia is going to be up here, and she's going to be sanitizing the podium and the microphone after each speaker. So once you speak and go back, if the next speaker could just give her a moment to get the podium and the microphone ready for you. But like I say, you're welcome to speak from right where you are if you prefer to do that. I'm going to make one small change in the agenda, just so we can get our new trustee up here with us. As you all know, Elizabeth Peters resigned because she moved out of state with her family. And I asked former trustee Pat Collins if she would be willing to serve out the term of Ms. Peters, and she very graciously accepted. So I would like to ask for a motion and a second to appoint trustee Collins.
So moved.
By Mr. Gallegos.
My second.
By Mr. Jisa. Any discussion? Do we need a roll call on this, Lance?
We do.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Welcome, Ms. Collins, if you'd like to... (laughter) I told you it might be a close vote, but yes, if you can join us now. Thank you.
Take your seat.
Yes. And we're all very lucky to have Ms. Collins back with us. So we'll move on now to presentations and public comment. If you are here for public comment, you're welcome to give your comments during the period for public comment at the start of the agenda, or you can wait till a particular item on the agenda if that's what you want to address. If you do, go up to the podium. We ask that you just give your name and your street address. But first up this evening, we have two presentations. We're honored to have with us tonight Eric Wagner from Visit Oak Park, and he's going to tell us a little bit about our partnership with Visit Oak Park and the wonderful thing that they're doing for us. Mr. Wagner.
Good evening, Village President and Honorable Trustees. My name is Eric Wagner. I am the President and CEO of Visit Oak Park. Visit Oak Park is the tourism bureau that represents pretty much all of Western Cook County. I'd like to start with this quote from the man who created Pure Michigan, talking about the role that tourism plays in economic development. His name is George Zimmerman, and he said, "Tourism is indeed the first date for economic development." Tourism as economic development happens when people get inspired to visit a community. When people get inspired to visit a community, they visit, they fall in love, they come back. Eventually, they move there, they open up a business, they retire. Tourism can really play an important role in economic development, and it is sort of the first date of that process. A little bit about Visit Oak Park. We are the state-certified convention and visitor bureau. That essentially means that we are entitled to receive state funding to help market this area. We are a local affiliate of the Illinois Office of Tourism. There are currently 40 convention and visitor bureaus across Illinois. We receive state and local funding. Our funding formula comes from the Village of Oak Park, their hotel tax, and hotel funds from the State of Illinois. Our partnership, we work very closely with the Illinois Office of Tourism on a number of domestic and international advertising campaigns. We work to make sure that this area is represented on Enjoy Illinois, in Enjoy Illinois Magazine, which I gave you a copy of. And we work with the State of Illinois to promote this area in different marketing initiatives, such as Illinois Made, which we've been really happy to have a number of Illinois-made makers from this area, including Quincy Street Distillery, Higgins Glass, and FLUR. We have 19 partner communities, and we're growing. We actually got two new communities this year. We're pleased to welcome back Berwyn, and we're pleased to add La Grange to our fold. So what does it mean when the partnership between Visit Oak Park and the Village of Riverside? So this is a no-cost partnership opportunity for Riverside, but it does give a lot of benefits from both the Illinois Office of Tourism and from Visit Oak Park. With regard to the Illinois Office of Tourism, it gets the village placed on the enjoyillinois.com website, in Enjoy Illinois Magazine, and in different marketing and advertising initiatives. Similarly, for Visit Oak Park as well, on our website, in our inspiration guide, which I gave you copies of, and in our advertising and marketing campaigns. It also enables you, the village, to tap into our different services that we offer. So we offer a number of what we call destination marketing services. One of the most important ones are the ones that a lot of our partner communities really particularly enjoy, is our marketing partnership opportunities. So, you know, we've entered into a number of different marketing campaigns with our different partner communities in order to pool our money together to have it go farther. I want to promote Riverside as much as Riverside does, so how do we put our marketing dollars together to have them go farther? So we're pleased to offer a number of marketing partnership opportunities that enable us both to get what we're looking for, which is to help promote Riverside and the Oak Park area in general. Since I joined Visit Oak Park, we have done a number of things to help take Visit Oak Park to the next level. We've been focused heavily on meeting the demands of today's consumers, so we went ahead and developed a new visual brand identity. We created a new brand called Meet Us Here, which allows us to incorporate a number of our partner communities in that branding. So Meet Us Here could be Meet Us in Oak Park, Meet Us in Riverside, Meet Us at Brookfield Zoo. We really wanted to develop a dynamic brand that would help us incorporate our other communities, since our name is Visit Oak Park, but we also represent a number of other communities. We invested in a new website. We created a new brand video. We invested heavily in video and photography. We created a new inspiration guide, which had a whole new strategy. So instead of just having the traditional visitor guide that just sits at the rest stops on 290 or whatever, we went ahead and worked with Midwest Living, or Meredith the Publisher, to create an inspiration guide that gets polybagged in all of their magazines and goes and targets directly their Midwest travel enthusiasts. So it was a whole new strategy we did with the inspiration guide. We also invested heavily in focusing on digital marketing. Digital marketing isn't just the future. Digital marketing is now. And so we made sure that Visit Oak Park was set up to do really highly sophisticated digital marketing, to really make sure that we're maximizing our dollars in the marketplace. And then we also shifted from a traditional chamber model, which has membership, to this new marketing partnership model that allows us to enter into different marketing partnerships with our partner communities and our area attractions. This slide just shows you a little bit of some of the things I was talking about earlier. You can see our new branding, how we've been able to incorporate, in this case, Brookfield, into our branding. You see our new tagline, Meet Us Here. That's Frank Lloyd Wright in the background, a new inspiration guide, and just our new video and some of our other assets that we've created. I want to talk a little bit about the Visit Oak Park/Riverside partnership that we just completed. So we worked with the village to create a new Riverside Community page on our website, visitriversideil.com. We executed a digital marketing campaign for Riverside this past fall/winter called Meet Us in Riverside. We created a number of new Riverside assets, in particular, a number of new videos. We created a new brand video just for Riverside. And then we also created a video for FLUR, for Illinois Made, and we worked with the State of Illinois to make sure that they went ahead and created a video for Higgins Glass. And then we went ahead and did a number of photo shoots to help get some new assets to really highlight the village. And you see, all of the photos are on the presentation. Not all of them, but a number of them. I want to quickly walk you through the new Riverside Community page, which serves as basically a new website for Riverside. It launched on Friday, November 22nd. Basically helps serve as a website for Riverside with its own URL, visitriversideil.com. You get your own community logo and images. We provide a number of itineraries and stories that help highlight Riverside. We're going to be adding an event section and business listings, and we also have a collage of social media photos at the end, at the bottom of the page. And then we also have a number of technical things that are important to making sure you have an effective website, such as SEO and Google Analytics. We launched a campaign, as I said earlier, this past fall. Ran from November and December. We targeted a 25-mile radius outside Chicagoland. We primarily, for cost-effective reasons, focused on Facebook and Instagram. We ran the campaign out of our Facebook account, but we used Riverside branding and logo. And the result was, we got about 164,000 impressions. These were the videos I wanted to show you that we produced. Unfortunately, they didn't download correctly, but we worked with the Illinois Office of Tourism to create a video for FLUR that I wanted to show, that I can't show unfortunately, unless it... And then we also created a new video, a brand video highlighting Riverside as a community that unfortunately I can't show right now either, but I'll make sure you get copies of those. And then again, just focusing on the new photography that we did of the village to try to focus on the key drivers that get people to come to the village. So I'll quickly talk about next steps. So we're recommending for the village as investment that we continue building out the community page. Content is king, and so we just want to make sure that we're focused on adding more stories and more itineraries that get people inspired to come and visit Riverside. We want to make sure we're getting all of our new photos and videos up on the new community page. We want to add local events when they come back. We'll get all the business listings up there, and we'll just make sure it's optimized for a search engine. And the goal for us is really to make sure that we own all search results for Riverside, and that we're collecting data and then able to retarget using that data, people who show interest in what Riverside has to offer. I just want to say thank you to Riverside. I did this really quick because I know you have a time constraint, but I just want to say thank you to Riverside for your partnership over the years. We have really valued having Riverside as one of our partner communities. Riverside really does have a lot to offer, and we're really pleased that we can partner with you, because this really is one of those communities that we have that generates a lot of interest in visitors, whether they're from the Chicago area or from out of state. I just want to thank, you know, Riverside has had a great partnership with Visit Oak Park. Our board chair is Aberdeen Marsh Ozga, who leads us, leads the organization, and so we thank her for all of her time and dedication. We also thank Jennifer Fournier, who's been a new addition to our board, who has really helped take the organization to a new level, in particular with our digital marketing. The current pandemic has had an impact. We're funded by hotel taxes, so it has had an impact on our funding. But, you know, at this point, we're waiting for funding to return. We do have a commitment from Governor Pritzker and from the legislature to continue our funding for FY '21. And we know now more than ever that, you know, partnership is going to be key as we all try to get through the recovery. So we're really looking forward to partnering with the village to help Riverside and all of Western Cook County recover from the current economic downturn. I did that really fast, but if there's any questions, I'm willing to take any you might have.
Trustees or anyone visiting with us tonight? Mr. Wagner, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the Village of Riverside. This has been a very lucrative and rewarding partnership that we have with Visit Oak Park. Aberdeen and Jennifer, thank you for being our point people there, and we look forward to a long and prosperous relationship with you.
Thank you so much. Now, we're really excited to continue the partnership, so thank you.
So next up, we have a fun presentation for us tonight. We have our very own village forester, Mike Collins is here. And I'm not even going to spoil how cool this is. I'm just going to let him start, and you'll see what Mike has been up to. Mr. Collins.
Good evening, President Salz, Village Trustees, and Village Manager Francis. You know, to say these past months have been challenging would be an understatement, so I really appreciate the invitation to come and speak about my trip to Shanghai, China last year with the Morton Arboretum. I also would like to provide a very brief forestry update at the end. And with that, I'm just going to kind of hit the ground running, and hopefully we'll have some time for discussion at the end if you have questions and such. So, forester in a foreign land. You can see the subtitle there. Basically, the trip took place November 11th to the 17th in 2019. I was originally contacted by Che Shan Kua, who's the urban tree science leader at the Morton Arboretum, part of their research department. She basically extended an invitation to travel to Shanghai, China, and represent Riverside's municipal forestry program, which I was incredibly honored and humbled to do. And really, I share all of that with everyone here in this room, because really, without the resources to have a successful forestry program, I would not be there. Anyway, they have a memorandum of understanding between the Shanghai Botanic Garden and Morton, where they agreed to do exchange programming and exchange activity. So, you know, of course, I ran this up the flagpole with Director Bailey. He spoke with all of you, and once the trip was somewhat green-lighted, I was then contacted by the Shanghai Engineering Research Center of Urban Tree Ecology and Application. You can see in the picture there, my hosts. To the left there is Yan Ru Ching. He was their municipal forester, and he basically oversees all 10 districts in Shanghai. No small task, to say the least. In the center there is Yan Wei. She is the director of the research center. And then far right was Hillary, who is basically my translator and kind of dragged me through the culture and helped me assimilate for the week. So as part of the exchange activity, essentially, every day, we would go on these tours, where they would take us to public parks and street areas. We would talk about urban tree challenges that they were facing. They were very interested in our support and insight related to American forestry, so we would have these meetings and discuss these challenges. I also committed to an hour-long presentation at a conference halfway through the trip, which was great. It pretty much presented our forestry program overseas. And then lastly, I did submit a report following the trip, which I'd be happy to share with all of you if you're interested. You know, this would be a typical picture of street trees in old Shanghai. You note there, it might be a little difficult to see, but a majority of these trees are all the same, which are London plane trees, very similar to our sycamore trees. They have over 1.2 million trees, 28 million people, which is almost hard to fathom, coming from 10 million in the Chicagoland region. But one thing I thought was really interesting is the fact that they had these monocultures, 70% London plane tree throughout the entire town, city. So, you know, that's a little concerning from the American perspective, but they really value these trees, and it really works for them. So just a cultural difference, really. But they did also apply in some locations, some species diversity. You know, you can kind of see in this picture where they have some taxodium there, some smaller oaks coming in, a little bit of ginkgo. You know, this was in a newer development on a boulevard across from our hotel. You know, their tree preservation, I think, is what really struck me the most. They spent so much time and effort trying to hold on to their old trees. This particular tree, it's pretty fun. It started to lean and was about to fall over, so Chinese solution, let's build this sculpture rock, and we'll attach it with this rubber string and just leave it sitting so that it's propped up and it can keep, you know, growing. This one was a probably 25- to 30-inch diameter London plane tree, where they had basically topped it out. It had fallen over in a typhoon. Unfortunately, the picture doesn't come through that well, but there's rubber strapping on these two neighboring trees where they run guy wires over to support the tree. You can see they basically replanted it and propped it up, and now it's starting to sprout again. This is a lot why they call these the super trees of Shanghai, the London plane trees, because it seemed like they could do almost anything. And then this was my personal favorite, where they had a London plane tree that had split down the center, so they basically crafted a concrete pylon, painted it the color of the bark, and then affixed it with a toe strap at the top. You know, pretty amazing stuff, really, very inspiring. In terms of their tree pruning, I was completely overwhelmed by the amount of labor that they put towards their work over there. You know, they basically have crews come in and prune every tree once a year, all 1.2 million. The one thing I really found interesting is they do this crazy pruning approach, to me as an American forester, where they basically top the tree, and they'll make it grow into a cup formation, which then goes around these power lines. This is to avoid that infrastructure conflict. Very different from what we would do here, but again, it works for them. In terms of their tree planting, I was completely blown away. This is probably a 10- to 12-inch diameter tree, that they basically pruned all of the growth off of it, planted it, and it will re-sprout around these power lines. That's basically how they plant their trees. Typically, we go for about a 2-inch caliper tree, so everything's sort of supersized over there, which, you know, was kind of amazing. And then I caught this truck going by. It's a little blurry, but you can see the size of these trees. It was just, you know, very, very impressive. You know, I did want to share with you one of the favorite spots that I went on tours. It was the Zubaiachi Gardens. It's one of five ancient gardens, 2,000 years old. Basically, the original Chinese calligrapher lived there. And it was much more what I kind of pictured of China before I went there. You know, a very traditional, pristine manicured garden, very beautiful. And then I had to share this picture in the garden. Hopefully, you can see this. There's a little arrow at the top. There's this gondola, and you can see this crane sculpture. And then off in the distance, you see a construction crane, all in one eyeshot. And I just thought that was kind of hilarious. You know, it's like old world China meets new world China, you know, in the way that Shanghai is developing so quickly and things are being built up so fast. It was just kind of a neat thing to see in one eyeshot. And then also, I wanted to share a picture of this 300-year-old camphor tree, which was in the courtyard. Just reminded me of home in the way of, you know, all of the massive oaks that we have here. It was just really breathtaking. And then Pusing Park. This was a French park that I had went to, you know, built in 1908, more in the city center. You can see the skyscrapers off in the distance. One thing that really impressed me was the amount of community in their public spaces. You see pictures here of people dancing together. You know, there are people playing chess and checkers and, you know, wooden sword fights, everything you could think of, hanging their birds and trees and cages. I mean, it was really a gathering every day that you would see. And it kind of reminded me a lot of Riverside. It was almost like Olmsted's vision realized halfway across the globe, which I thought was really inspiring. And then, you know, lastly, I just wanted to kind of give props in the way of their hardscape. I mean, you know, you see all these pebbles. Each one of these pebbles were concreted into a pathway, and just the amount of labor something like that takes, you know, really, their attention to detail, I was just incredibly impressed. So, you know, really, that trip for me, I think, expanded me both professionally and personally, and I just wanted to share that, and I really appreciate the invitation to talk about that tonight. And then I did want to, of course, take advantage and give you a slight forestry update. Just wanted to let you know, 2017, 2018, we did receive a cost match grant. We're awarded that grant and implemented that grant. We redid our entire street tree inventory and parks as well. As a result, we did generate a management plan that goes out to 2023, you know, giving some recommendations and a few modifications based on some insights and data that was acquired. Tree planting, we did about 65 trees this year. I wanted to make sure that I thanked the Frederick L. Olmsted Society for their kind and generous donation. They donated $2,000 for park planting this year. Removals-wise, we're actually doing fairly well this year. We've only removed 35 trees to date. I do believe that climate change is driving a lot of these, especially probably 40% or 50% of the trees I've been removing are maples, which are forecasted to no longer be in the Chicagoland region by 2050, which is concerning. Emerald ashbore and Dutch elm disease have been fairly moderate. I'm going to knock on wood on that. Hopefully, I'm not jinxing anything there, but we have not had many major outbreaks at this point, and emerald ashbore is really on the back end. Cyclic trimming, we did division, we will be doing division two this year, which would be Lawton, Gage, Olmsted, Black Hawk. Just also wanted to let you know, since I was here last, I did receive my municipal specialist accreditation, which is just a higher level of a certified arborist through the International Society of Arbiculture. Also received a tree risk assessment qualification as well for appraising risk. And then 15 years of Tree City USA and moving onward, which is really just a recognition by the National Arbor Day Foundation as to how much we put towards our urban canopy here in Riverside and what we do. And then lastly, I just wanted to close and let you know about our WORTH project, which is the White Oak Riverside Tree Heritage Project. In 2017, I went around the river and collected acorns from our pre-settlement white oak trees. We've engaged with possibility place for contractual growing, where we'll grow these trees on by 2023. At the latest, about 102-inch saplings. And I think the idea behind this is to preserve a genetic legacy in terms of our pre-settlement oaks around the river, and try to start underplanting in advance of those losses. So with that, again, I just wanted to thank you for your time, and if you had any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Questions for forester Collins? Anyone in the audience? I did, what is the effect of climate change on the maples? What is it that's happening to the maples?
Well, in essence, you know, with climate change, it's the extreme weather events, whether it's extreme drought or extreme moisture. And in the case of maples, for instance, you know, these, like, for instance, in May, we had about nine inches of rainfall, which pretty much leaves maple sitting in a completely saturated soil. You know, most people think, oh, trees are getting water, they're happy. Well, you know, maples are a fairly sensitive species, and for their feeder roots to be underwater for a month at a time, they generally start to die back. And then, you know, as a consequence, you start to see the top portion of the tree trying to balance out and begin to die back as well. And then also further exacerbated, when we have, you know, like, the drought that we had in 2014, for instance, that has another severe impact on maple tree roots. So it's almost like a one-two punch of extreme drought and excessive flooding that then tips the scale and starts to put them into decline.
On the maple trees, so like, I have one in my backyard where the roots are actually coming up out of the ground. What can residents, are we supposed to cover that up, or should we leave the roots growing up?
I caught some of that. You said that it was underground?
No, the roots are coming up out of the ground. They're just like, they're like, you know, parallel with the ground. How should residents treat that? Because it seems like they're coming up more and more recently. It's only about a 20-foot tree, but I'm trying to take care of it.
Generally, what I would recommend is to maybe protect those roots with a layer of mulch to keep mowers off of them and such. But, you know, I think generally, some surface rooting is acceptable up to a certain point. We really want trees to root a little deeper than that, but, you know, it's really hard to turn back the clock of time on those sorts of issues. So I would just recommend mulching. So I would just recommend mulching, protect the tree roots.
Well, Mr. Collins, I just would like to say that I can't imagine a better steward for our urban forest or for Olmsted's vision than you. And we're really honored that you were able to go to China and represent not only Riverside, but our nation. So thank you for the extraordinary work you do for us and for sharing some of it with them.
Thank you so much. Again, I couldn't do it without the support that I get from the board, village manager, and director Bailey. So thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Mr. Wagner, you're free to escape if you want to. Thank you for coming tonight. Next up is public comment. As I mentioned earlier, you're welcome to speak now or you can wait until we get to a specific agenda item. Would anyone like to address the board at this point? Okay, we'll move on then to reports of village officers. First up is the president's report. You have before you a motion to appoint and reappoint the following individuals to various village boards and commissions. Appoint Charles Terhune to the Economic Development Commission, a term to expire 2021. Appoint Larry Forsberg to the Economic Development Commission, term to expire 2023. Appoint John McLennan to the Parks and Recreation Board, term to expire 2025. Reappoint Richard Julian to the Historical Commission, term to expire 2023. Reappoint Sandra Kaplan to the Preservation Commission, term to expire 2023. And reappoint Sean O'Brien to the Parks and Recreation Board, term to expire 2025. I'd ask for a motion and second to appoint.
So moved.
By Mr. Gallegos. By Mr. Hannan. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Collins. Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Jiza.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan. Trustee Evans. Trustee Pollak.
Motion carries. And we're fortunate to have Mr. McLennan here with us this evening to be sworn in. If you'd like to step up and Ms. Haley can do it for you. Is Mr. McLennan here? You're Mr. McLennan, right? Yes. If you'll just walk over and Kathy will swear you in. I'm sorry, Charles, I didn't see you there. Thank you, John, welcome. Are you ready for Mr. Terhune? Charles?
Hi, Charles, introduce yourself and this way. Go to support the Constitution of the United States. Every constitutional decision of mine. Now, a fair way to perform the duties. The office of economic development. The knowledge of the side of the law. Pass it on.
And no, just because you're now in the commission, you're not obligated to sit through the entire meeting. So you're welcome to stay, but you can feel free to leave whenever you wish. Next up is a motion that refers to, we've received a grant from the Regional Transportation Association to do an update on our zoning code with regard to our business districts. And as part of that process, we're creating an ad hoc committee that's going to serve as a steering committee for that zoning update. So with regard to that, I'd like a motion and a second to appoint the following individuals to the ad hoc committee. Jeff Sirmack, Jill Mateo, Jennifer Hanahan, and Doug Pollak. Yes, sir.
Just a point of order. Could we have the motion to create the committee and then the motion to appoint?
Okay. I like the motion to create the ad hoc committee.
So moved.
By Mr. Gallegos. By Ms. Collins. Please call the roll.
Trustee Collins. Trustee Gallegos. Trustee Hannan. Trustee Evans. Trustee Pollak.
Motion carries. And now to appoint the committee members. A motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Collins. Second by Mr. Gallegos. Please call the roll.
Trustee Collins. Trustee Gallegos. Trustee Hannan. Trustee Evans. Trustee Pollak.
Motion carries. So I have a few other incidental items that I wanted to discuss tonight. The first concerns the chalk events that we've had in town the last few weeks. I've received a number of questions about why those events were authorized or whether they were authorized. As part of that learning process, our village attorneys have explained to us, explained to me, I should say, the notion of a public forum. But this is not a conversation that we've been able to have generally as a board. So I thought we would discuss that tonight. So with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Molina if he can explain the concept of a public forum. Attorney Molina.
Thank you. So the basically government property is divided into categories. And what is a traditional public forum? Are those areas that have, are open in general to every member of the public? And those are things like sidewalks, typically, not all sidewalks. There are some cases pointing out that although a sidewalk may be in the technically right of way, it's in such an obscure area that it may not be a traditional public forum. Or the streets and so forth of a municipality. And those are the areas that have traditionally been used by members of the public to propose messages, whether those are political messages or religious messages, but the basic communication to get a message out to all who will pay attention. The government's ability to regulate in a traditional public forum is at its most limited. First of all, it can't be content-based, but it almost can never be anyway in whatever forum there is. But it's very limited even in time, place, and manner restrictions, which are the typical way that governments regulate.
You said contact-based?
No, content.
Oh, content-based, sorry.
Can never be content-based. But in a traditional public forum, time, place, and manner restrictions are appropriate in some cases. For instance, loud noises at 3:00 a.m. If you have someone who wants to protest at 3:00 a.m. and uses a loudspeaker or something, the government can regulate that. That's a time, place, and manner type restriction. So typically, on a public sidewalk during business hours, the government really has no ability to control protesting unless it involves extraordinarily large numbers of people. And some municipalities have ordinances that deal with those large gatherings and require advance notice for purposes of planning public safety and perhaps directing traffic and so forth. Many communities have these. Many of them are outdated because they don't have objective criteria in them. And so they leave open the idea that someone who grants the permit, there are no standards. And so they could deny it for any reason, which then creates a constitutional problem. So specifically, as it relates to chalk, there are a number of cases involving the ability of the government to regulate chalk. Not specifically, but through your typical ordinances which involve defacement of public property, which would include sidewalks and things like that or damaging them. So the cases basically generally uphold such ordinances when they are challenged on their face by a plaintiff who says, look at this ordinance. This could be applied to chalk on a sidewalk. The cases typically uphold the ordinances as constitutional. However, the cases where someone has actually been charged with using chalk on a sidewalk tend to come out the other way. And the courts tend to say the chalk is temporary, it's harmless, it doesn't damage the sidewalk. And so it was not a reasonable enforcement to cite the person or in some cases arrest them. So chalking in general, while a defacement ordinance is typically okay, whenever you're trying to enforce things like chalking on a sidewalk or something like that, it's probably not a good idea because it is temporary. And you could point out that if the government wanted to forbid chalk on a sidewalk as defacement, you'd have to do the same for the kids that do the squares on the sidewalk, which are on just about every village street anyway. So as a practical matter, there would be a fairness issue there if you sort of pick and choose what chalking you don't like. So, and then to go beyond a traditional public forum to say the offices within Village Hall, the member of the public, just because it's government property, does not have a right to walk into Manager Francis's office and sit there and watch her do her job. That is not a traditional public forum. It's government property, but it's not open to the public. And so the government is free to bar the general public from those areas unless there's some meeting or someone is invited. And then there's kind of a halfway house where a government can do a limited public forum. It can, a good example of that is a meeting room or a room such as this where government may create the ability for the public to use a space that is public property. And it can do that in a limited way. And it can even limit it to certain groups and not others as long as the regulations are not content-based, but sort of classification-based. So you could, for instance, have a room that is open for meetings for residents only or a room that is open for meetings for any non-commercial reason. But you wouldn't allow, say, someone to rent the room or sign up to use the room to do a sales pitch, for example. And although that's discrimination on the basis of the kind of speech it is as far as a category, as long as those rules were reasonable and had a fair basis in what the government was trying to do, a court would likely uphold them. And that's a limited public forum. You're opening it, but not to the public at large. The way a traditional public forum is open to the public at large and anybody can go there pretty much at any time as long as they're not disturbing the peace or violating some other criminal or valid local ordinance and make the kind of speech they want.
So before I open it up to general questions from the trustees, this is a replay of a conversation I've already had with Mr. Molina. You know, our greatest concern when these events happened in the last couple of weeks has been public safety. And the idea of having people out in the street with traffic concerns. So how does, because we have a duty to protect as well. So how does that balance work between our concern for public safety and keeping people safe during these kind of events and their right to do them?
It works very difficult, in a very difficult way. And the thing is because it's perception. So generally speaking, definitely a municipality has the right to tell people who are protesting to stay out of the street generally as far as blocking traffic. But if someone is in the street, remember, people may be on a curb and they may want to be able to approach a car to hold up a sign or something, and that is protected. So it's a delicate balance. And that's why I said some communities have these large, if you have large gatherings, they would have police that would prepare to cordon off a portion of a street, for example, if people wouldn't fit on the sidewalk. But in general, where the municipality has no knowledge of a protest or only anecdotal knowledge, now that we have social media, you see that there's a potential, someone happens to notice it. There's no obligation to close off streets or anything. The police would do their normal patrol throughout the area. If they noticed cars being blocked or something like that, they could, you know, attempt to tell the people to get out of the way or, you know, perhaps direct traffic a little differently. We usually, under community policing standards and de-escalation, we try to make it so that the police are trying to not get involved in a situation where they're trying to tell people what to do as little as possible, especially when the protests involve the police themselves. It's just sort of a recipe for conflict that you just try to avoid or to at least minimize. And yet, as you said, President Salz, protect members of the public. Both the protesters, people in cars, other pedestrians, businesses whose means of ingress and egress may be being blocked from others at a given time. Those are all things that are dealt with on a case-by-case basis. But again, always trying to achieve it through as de-escalated a means as is reasonable.
I mean, we were fortunate in the last event because the group on their own initiative decided to move it to Pine instead of being like on Long Common or Burlington. So they shared our concern, our safety concerns. So it was a cooperative effort.
And that's a great thing when that happens. The problem is sometimes the people who want to protest feel that those areas, which are safest, are not exposed enough. And that's the problem you run into. On the other hand, with social media, you know, sometimes it works out where it can be in an area that is immune from the fastest and the most dense traffic of vehicle traffic.
So trustees, this is kind of the first time you're hearing all of this. Do you have any questions or discussion that you'd like to have among yourselves or with Mr. Molina?
I do have a question. You said that some ordinances have been outdated. When was the last time that we have revised our ordinances?
Yeah, so we had this discussion. The villages, to the extent it has large gathering permit requirements, they're in a section called Parade. It's a specific chapter. It would need some work in order to, you know, to enforce it regularly. It is, it's a little bit outdated. It's not terrible, but okay.
1965 was when that was propagated.
Okay. Could we perhaps take a look at that at the next meeting so we can see if we want to have it revised?
Mr. Han?
Yeah, trustee, I'm sorry, I'm going to take this off the bat with the air conditioner if you don't mind.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I took mine off too, just because I want people to be able to hear, so.
Great. Well, you know, I just want to preface my comments. I know we have a lot of the people who put a couple of the activities together. And just want to preface that I think it's spectacular what you guys are doing, raising awareness. I think the message is similar to the inclusiveness that we discussed, I think, last summer when we were talking about the pride flag. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that's acknowledged because I think it's good that, you know, it's time for a relook at a lot of these issues. And I applaud you guys for taking the time and your organizational skills. Also, I applaud you guys for working with the village to make sure that things are in advance, that, you know, there's not, you know, undue safety issues created. And I want to thank you for that. Attorney Molina, I've got, you know, sort of a few questions and just trying to get some discussion here. You know, you mentioned temporary. And the analogy that I've used is, you know, somebody walking down with a sign. And for those of you who take the Union Pacific, you've seen the guy with the sign that simply says, you're going to hell, and has a megaphone and sits there as you end your day. What's the definition of temporary?
Okay, well, so when I use the word temporary, I was talking about the chalk cases, right? So the courts that have dealt with people who have Así que, los tribunales que han tratado de personas que han sido realmente sujetas a algún mecanismo de imposición por usar un ordenance de defasamiento, han usado el término temporal para el chalk como una forma de decir que no es defasamiento, porque se va a deshacer. No es como pintura spray, que se absorbe a cierto grado en el concreto, sería muy difícil. Quiero decir, si miras donde ha habido graffiti en brics o en cemento, puedes todavía ver un reflejo, a menos que el brick sea realmente destruido parcialmente. Y así, el tribunal estaba usando el término temporal para decir que no es realmente suficiente para ser defasamiento, o para ser el equivalente a graffiti que fue pintado spray. Pero no hay, no hay definición. El tribunal lo estaba usando en una forma opiniada. El ordenance no dijo nada allí sobre temporal o no.
Bien, y creo que le pregunté la pregunta, ya sabes, una cosa que has notado, y creo que todos los dueños están conscientes, es que, ya sabes, esto es neutral en contenido en lo que sea. Así que puede ser, ya sabes, uno de los locales iglesias saliendo con un anti-productivo de derechos, que quieren escribir en el piso en algún momento, o, ya sabes, algo extremadamente controversial, que es solo ofensivo, pero no profano, o no incide violencia. Y, ya sabes, lo que me gustaría explorar en algún momento es, ya sabes, ¿es un requisito que necesita permanecer durante 24, 48, 40 horas, como quieras hacerlo? ¿O hay una política que pueda adoptar para que sea, de hecho, discurso temporal durante 48 horas, algún grado en el que no se remueve inmediatamente? Pero para ponernos en una posición en la que si tenemos algo, ya sabes, más, ya sabes, ni siquiera quiero llamarlo, lo que hicieron controversial, pero, ya sabes, algo que va a, ya sabes, no ser consistente con, creo, nuestros valores de la comunidad, que querríamos remover, pero obviamente no podemos eliminarlo de inmediato. Creo que hay una necesidad de una política en place, sobre, ya sabes, ¿es, ya sabes, no menos de 48 horas?, o algo que se adhiera a ese mensajería temporal, pero no requiere al barrio y a los residentes ver esto, ya sabes, nuevamente, no hablando de lo que pasó, hablando de estas hipotéticas en el futuro, que son, ya sabes, simplemente inconsistentes con los valores del barrio.
Así que no hay obligación para una municipalidad de dejar el signo de chalk allí después de que los manifestantes se vayan. Diciendo eso, no quieres eliminarlo de una manera que sea basada en contenido. Así que, por ejemplo, si vas allí, si no te gusta el mensaje, y lo derramas de inmediato, pero los que no te importan, dejas. Pero si el barrio tiene una política de eliminar cualquier chalk en cualquier piso, si resulta que se encuentra, eso estaría bien. No importa si son cinco minutos después de que los manifestantes se vayan, o 24 horas. Y aunque no sé de ningún caso de casos de chalk en ese principio, hay un principio que está muy bien establecido, que los manifestantes que protestan con carteles, no pueden, como tomar una pausa y ir a casa por dos horas, y tener derecho a dejar sus carteles secos en el suelo. Si están allí con las carteles, eso está bien, es parte de su mensaje, pero es su mensaje. No pueden simplemente dejar el material allí. Y así el chalk, de algún modo, es como eso. Está fuera, y debido a que es de camino derecho, es propiedad del barrio, los barrios típicamente eliminan todo el signo desde su camino derecho, de todos modos, ya sea que haya gente tratando de vender lecturas de palma, o, ya sabes, anuncios de Craigslist, o lo que sea. Incluso ventas de garaje, si están en el camino derecho y no se les permite, se deshacen automáticamente, y nadie tiene derecho a tener esas cosas allí.
Y luego, solo una última pregunta, lo disculpo por anopolizar la discusión. Cuando se aplica al piso, ¿es ese el piso en sí? ¿Cómo distingues entre, ya sabes, paredes, paredes de mantenimiento? Supongo que solo significa una especie de área de piso plano.
Correcto, porque es el forum público tradicional. No hay, el derecho a escribir en el lado de un edificio gubernamental, ya sea que esté en chalk o con cualquier otro, es menos. Y, de hecho, el gobierno puede prohibirlo.
Estaba pensando más en términos de nuestros...
A menos que sea un kioske o algo así, que esté ahí para que la gente escriba.
Sí, estaba pensando más en el contexto de nuestros planteadores y otros tipos de vertical, ya sabes, paisajes que tenemos alrededor del barrio.
Entiendo. Quiero decir, yo creo que eso sería una limitación razonable, si la gente, ya sabes, tiene la habilidad de chalk en el piso, que puedes añadir una restricción adicional, que estén limitados a eso.
¿Otras preguntas de los dueños?
Tengo. Vale, gracias. También quiero ecoar los sentimientos que el dueño Hanan expresó al movimiento Black Lives Matter. Nos escuchamos. Y el comité ha demostrado cuán orgulloso están de ustedes. Así que por favor, no tomen esto en la wrong way. Porque habías mencionado que las protestas contra el tráfico y demás, el barrio es responsable de asegurar que tengan una seguridad, serenidad, como tuvimos para los eventos de 9 de junio y 19 de junio, donde teníamos vehículos de policía, vehículos de emergencia para asegurar que no había tráfico que iba a pasar con la gente, y para evitar los criminosos. Quiero decir, el barrio tiene una obligación por eso.
Así que no estoy seguro de haber entendido todo lo que dijiste, dueño Gallegos. Tal vez necesite bajar su máscara por solo un segundo, porque estaba teniendo dificultades.
Cuando tuvimos dos protestas el mes pasado, el barrio tenía sus vehículos bloqueando calles, bloqueando el tráfico, para que la marcha pudiera pasar. La expresión de expresión fue protegida. ¿El barrio tiene una obligación para hacer eso?
No. Quiero decir, no, no, no algún tipo de obligación afirmativa. Los oficiales de la policía, para proteger, si piensan que eso es lo mejor que pueden hacer, tienen la discreción de hacerlo. Quiero decir, en ese caso, era mi comprensión que uno de los anteriores, en realidad tenían una idea bastante buena, aunque no, no hubo permiso, en serio, involucrado. El barrio sabía, estaba anticipando un grupo grande, y así ellos solo, ya sabes, ellos solo hicieron lo que pensaban que era lo más apropiado para hacer que funcione, para que este grupo pudiera procesar de la forma que estaba planeada.
Así que...
Pero no hay obligación.
Bien, entonces, ¿qué pasa si el barrio no puede pagar para tener esa protección? Porque mi comprensión es que esas dos protestas costaron al barrio $30,000. Así que si las protestas continuas, el barrio mismo podría estar en financiación...
Correcto, así que...
Da mucha dinero.
Esa es otra área de preocupación. Es solo muy difícil cuando tratas de pasar esos costos. Ya sabes, pero si hay una situación realmente grande donde tienes a mucha gente, y el ordenance era lo suficientemente neutral, algunos costos probablemente podrían pasar. Pero estamos hablando de cientos upon cientos de personas que requieren una mayor presencia de policía.
Vale.
Pero creo que la pregunta es, ¿estamos obligados a proporcionar una presencia de policía?
No.
Así que si sabíamos que había una marcha, y sabíamos dónde iba a ser, podríamos elegir no bloquear calles.
Correcto.
Simplemente dejar que ocurra.
Correcto, y pero todavía tendrías, probablemente todavía querrías policía en el área.
Entiendo.
Y si hubieran suficientes personas donde estaban bloqueando las calles, tendrían que usar su juicio, en cuanto a si, para tratar de sacar a la gente de la calle, o tratar de intervenir y sostener carros para que los dejen pasar. Quiero decir, a veces las cosas suceden, accidentes suceden todo el tiempo, y tienes que bloquear temporariamente ciertas calles para que las cosas puedan moverse. En este caso, la gente podría procesar, y luego, tan pronto como termine, entonces lo abrirías de nuevo. Lo tratarían como un accidente, como una ocurrencia suddenísima que tienen que lidiar con. Y la policía lidia con esas cosas todo el tiempo.
¿Alguien que esté visitando con nosotros tiene preguntas para nuestro abogado? Sr. Malina, gracias por eso, fue muy útil. Así que lo último que tengo para ustedes esta noche es un actual. Recuerdan que el representante Zaleski pudo obtener $350,000 en financiación capital para un camino pervertido en Swan Pond. Después de un estudio más, se hizo obvio para nosotros que un camino pervertido realmente no tiene sentido en Swan Pond debido a la drainage inmediata que hay allí. Ahora tenemos una estimación de cuánto costará poner un camino expuesto a la agrega a través de Swan Pond, y es $475,000. Así que hoy escribí al Sr. Zaleski, pidiéndole si sería posible que nosotros repurponiésemos el original $350,000 a este nuevo proyecto. Veremos si puede hacer eso por nosotros. Si puede hacerlo por nosotros, eso nos deja con un descanso de $125,000. Tenemos una oportunidad de financiación de grante a través de Cook County. Sin embargo, hemos sido informados de que esa financiación de grante sería un 50-50 igual. Así que, ya sabes, el mayor que podríamos obtener de Cook County sería el 62.5. Así que mi pregunta para ustedes es, sabiendo que requeriría un 50% igual, si pudieramos repurponer los $350,000, ¿quería que el personal continúe su esfuerzo para recibir la financiación de grante?
Yo sí.
¿Seguiría el plan para ampliar el camino a 10 pies?
No sería 10, ¿está el Sr. Bailey todavía aquí? El plan actual es ocho pies.
Pero más allá de lo que está ahora.
Sí, sería más grande que ahora.
Bien, así que lo mismo que habría sido bajo el perfil del camino pervertido.
Sí, sí. ¿Sr. Pollak?
No estoy seguro, escuché todo lo que dijiste. Claramente estoy en favor de perseguir la financiación de grante por el camino. Estoy un poco preocupado si tenemos que tomar dinero del fondo general ahora para igualar, dado el económico...
Tendrás que hablar.
Estoy en favor de perseguir la financiación de grante para el camino. Querría ver alguna justificación si tuviéramos que tomar dinero del fondo general para nuestra porción igual de la grana, sabiendo que nuestros ingresos van a estar muy bajos este año, y podría, podría ser peor antes de que el año termine. Así que sería mi único preocupación.
Y escucho eso, pero la realidad es, la opción sería no hacerlo. No, nosotros, quiero decir, nosotros, nosotros llegamos, puede costarnos el 62.5, o puede costarnos el 475. Es realmente nuestra opción. Y como dije, tenemos que ver si el Sr. Zaleski va a poder mover esa financiación por nosotros. Así que esto no es algo escrito en piedra, pero no queremos que el personal gire sus ruedas, a menos que haya un consenso que esto es algo que queremos avanzar, porque como sabemos, el camino de asfalto ya está, ya sabes, caen aparte en ciertos, en ciertos áreas. Así que veo una raya de la cabeza. Sí, señor.
President Sells, creo que el camino rivero es uno de los highlights del barrio. Trae a la gente hacia esa área, y creo que, ya sabes, cualquier financiación de grana que podamos conseguir para hacer que esa área sea más usable, más sobrevivible durante la inundación, y hacerla un muestra del barrio es valioso perseguir.
Así que mi comprensión después de nuestra conversación el mes pasado fue que el agrega, el agrega expuesto no duraría tanto. Nuevamente, solo sería otro ajuste de 10 años. Y luego, hablamos de explorar, repurponer los fondos para el parque de Quincy.
Así que déjame tomar el último, el tiempo de vida, y desearía que el Sr. Bailey estuviera aquí. Oh, él está aquí. Sr. Bailey, ¿cuál es, cuál es el tiempo de vida esperado para el agrega expuesto?
Generalmente, hablando, tenemos, hemos visto varios superficios en Riverside a lo largo de los años. El asfalto es uno de los más comunes, que tiene un plazo de 15 años de vida de planificación. El concreto, que incluiría el concreto del agrega expuesto, es 35 años, y los pavimentos, pavimentos de madera, es 50.
Y en cuanto a la segunda parte, cuando tuvimos nuestra última discusión, fue nuestra, pensamos que podríamos, que el costo para Swan Pond sería menos de $350,000. Así que en ese punto, estábamos en busca de la posibilidad de si podríamos dividir esa financiación, ya sabes, parte para Swan Pond y parte para el parque de parking 8. Ahora que sabemos que el costo es en realidad 475, necesitaríamos el total de 350 para el parque de Swan Pond. Y luego tendríamos que encontrar una manera a través del fondo de parking de parking para abordar el parque sobrevivible. Bien, así que parece que tenemos un consenso.
¿Puedo añadir una pregunta? Y sobre esas estadísticas que acabas de proporcionar, ¿eso toma en consideración la inundación? ¿Han sido priorizados? O...
Estabas preguntando la durabilidad de los brics.
Solo, los 15 años, 35 años, etc. ¿Eso es para el, para el, para el camino? ¿Eso toma en consideración la inundación? ¿O son reducidos? Porque, debido a la...
Sí, no puedo imaginar que sería una decisión correcta poner pavimentos sobrevivibles en el Swan Pond. Creo que los únicos real, real, decisiones razonables son el asfalto, que tenemos experiencia con, o el concreto, el concreto del agrega expuesto. Cualquier tipo de superficie sobrevivible no tiene sentido allí, debido a, bueno, no hay nada que ganar.
Correcto.
Y teóricamente, al menos, las superficies sobrevivibles requieren mantenimiento, excepto que hay, no hay realmente, no hay beneficio de eso. Así que creo que hay solo dos opciones realistas allí, en lo que respecta a long-term superficies durables, asfalto o concreto.
Sí, quiero decir, creo que, para mí, ese camino es el resplandor del barrio por muchas razones diferentes. Quiero decir, miro por mi casa, eso es genial, pero, pero solo para todos, veo a la gente caminando por allí sin parar. Y no es solo para los residentes, veo a la gente caminando por el puente, y caminando por él también. Una vez en un rato, veo algunos perdedores.
No puedo imaginar quién podría ser. Bien, así que tenemos un consenso que lo harán. Gracias, Sr. Bailey, que perseguirán la financiación de grana si se vuelve feasible. Así que eso es todo lo que tengo. ¿Monsieur Francis?
Tengo solo un elemento esta tarde. Solo quería actualizar el Consejo. Podrían recordar...
¿Puedes hablar?
Sí. Sí, podrían recordar que tuvimos el comité adhoc que se refería a garajes y caminos de conducción.
Tendrías que bajar la máscara. Bajo, apenas escucho a usted.
Okay. Así que podrían recordar que tuvimos el comité adhoc sobre garajes y caminos de conducción. En realidad tuvieron su final encuentro el 5 de febrero de 2020. Director Bailey, antes de su final encuentro, había proporcionado al Consejo un actual respecto a los hallazgos de la grupo. Dado que la completación del grupo adhoc ha ocurrido, Director Bailey y Director Apt trabajarán en las recomendaciones que fueron proporcionadas, y pasarán por el proceso en relación con la Comisión de Planificación y Zonación, y la Comisión de Preservación. Así que esto vendrá de vuelta al Consejo del Barrio a una fecha futura. Y eso es todo lo que tengo que reportar esta tarde.
Gracias. Pasemos ahora a la aprobación de la agenda de consentimiento. Lo que se hará esta tarde es ratificar la lista de presupuestos de julio 2, aprobar la lista de presupuestos de julio 16, aprobar el consejo de la trustee, las reuniones regulares para junio 18, todos estos son 2020, revisar y firmar las reuniones del Consejo de Desarrollo Económico, el 14 de mayo, la reunión regular de la Comisión de Planificación y Zonación, y el 27 de mayo, la reunión regular de la Comisión de Preservación, y las reuniones especiales de febrero 25. Revisar y firmar los reportes de la Comisión de Desarrollo, Finanzas, Fire, Policía y Trabajo de los Departamentos de la Iglesia y la Publicidad para junio 2020. Una resolución aprobando un cambio de orden para un sistema de supresión de fuego, y una propuesta de sistema de alarma para el Fox Valley Fire and Safety, por un valor que no exceda $27,519. Una resolución autorizando la venta o la disposición de propiedad personal de la Comunidad de Riverside. Una resolución aprobando un amendamiento a la Comunidad de Riverside de planificación de beneficios en función de la Ley de Cares. Motion a aprobar un acuerdo intergubernamental, acuerdo subrayado de recipiente para los fondos de alivio del coronavirus entre Cook County y la Comunidad de Riverside, y una resolución autorizando una solicitud de permiso de Hardscape para la instalación de importante signo de área de perdedor en Swan Pond y Riveside Road. Pediré una motion en un segundo para aprobar. Así es. Por el Sr. Gallegos. Segundo por el Sr. Jisa. Por favor, llama a la ronda.
Dueño Collins.
Aye.
Dueño Gallegos.
Aye.
Dueño Jisa.
Aye.
Dueño Hanan.
Aye.
Dueño Evans.
Aye.
Dueño Pollak.
Aye. Motion to carries. Reportes de departamentos, comisiones o socios de la trustee. ¿Hay algún reporte de socios esta tarde? Oh, voy a aprovechar esa oportunidad. Esto es, esto es en realidad una anuncio que no creo que haya hecho. Con la desaparición de Ms. Peters, con su resignación, el dueño Evans se convertirá en el nuevo socio de la Comisión de Desarrollo Económico. ¿Hay algo más que eso? Siguiente, son ordenances y resoluciones. Tenemos una ordenanza autorizando la renovación del programa de programación de electricidad. ¿Monsieur Francis?
Tenemos a Sharon Derling aquí de NYMAC, que ha ayudado al barrio desde que... Lo siento, lo siento. Tenemos a Sharon Derling aquí de NYMAC, que ha ayudado al barrio a través de este proceso una serie de veces previas. Pero dentro de su paquete de Consejos, hay las tabulaciones de oferta, y también hay una opción alternativa. Y cuando lo miras desde mi perspectiva, mirando a los dos proveedores que ofrecen el igual de la ComEd Program, MC Squared en realidad proporcionará al barrio 100% de energía verde, y también proporcionará una contribución civic por nuestro... and also provide a civic contribution for our potential green initiatives over the duration of our contract with them, which can be up to three years. So that is an option, and I think that would remain consistent with the village's goal for green energy. However, there is also a bid tabulation along with, on page 194 of your packet, that includes the different bid options that were provided and also COMED's current rate. You will note that obviously these rates are at a premium in comparison to COMED, whereas the MC Squared program would provide residents the COMED rate while also providing them the green energy. If I may, President Sells, can Sharon go up and present to the board the additional findings that perhaps I have overlooked?
Well, let me ask, let me just take a look. I mean, it seems to me this is pretty straightforward. Do you need further discussion or is it pretty clear what we want? Is that okay with you? Okay. All right, well, with that, I'd ask for someone to make a motion regarding, well, we have to make a choice. The staff recommendation is MC Squared.
With the civic contribution?
With the civic contribution. So do I hear a motion and a second to choose MC Squared Energy?
MC Squared is what I've...
By Mr. Gallegos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pollak. Further discussion? Thank you again, Mr. Durling, for leading us through this again and providing us these great opportunities.
Oh, I do, I'm sorry. One item that was not addressed, we need to know the duration. Is it a one-year, two-year, or three-year?
One-year, two-year, three-year. What is your recommendation?
Well, three years, you've locked it away and you won't see me again for three years, but that means your residents wouldn't be receiving notices annually. And if they get notice fatigue, this is a little bit smoother. And there would be that $10,000 contribution annually each year, so three years, you know...
Would be optimal.
Would be great. But your choice, of course.
Would you like to amend your motion to include a three-year term?
I like the three-year term. I do. So I'll amend it officially.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you again, and thanks for coming tonight. And we like seeing you. You can come back every year.
Thank you.
Next up are considerations, and first up is a discussion of ice cream trucks. Manager Francis, did you want to introduce this, or did you want me just to do it?
You can do it.
So this is, I had heard from several residents regarding this. We did some research. We found it in 2004 for reasons that we can't really determine. Ice cream trucks were kind of carved out of the food truck vendor ordinance and specifically excluded and not allowed. So the question for tonight is, do we just want to leave that prohibition in place? Or are you willing to revisit this and have staff take a look at kind of the kind of ordinance we would need to properly regulate an ice cream truck, to allow ice cream trucks within Riverside?
I do have a question on that.
Please.
With the pandemic happening right now, are there any guidelines for the CDC on this or Health Department that?
I haven't been able to find anything specifically with regard to ice cream trucks.
Okay.
I mean, that, when you look, for example, Elgin had outlawed for 45 years. And I think it was last year they changed and allow them now. So those kind of health concerns could obviously be addressed within the ordinance or within the permitting procedure for, you know, the trucks. But, I mean, obviously, we would take appropriate caution to protect children and the occasional adult that wants to...
Here's a scenario I remember growing up here. So the swim club would have adult swims, 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock on the hour. All the kids had to get out of the pool, and the ice cream truck knew exactly when to come by with their times. And then 20, 30 kids would rush over there. You have that group of kids so closely together during the pandemic, there could be a concern. So that's the one I have right now. In general, I would be fine with them, but, you know, I like to play it safe on this matter.
What's everybody else think? Mr. Hannan?
Yeah, I've got, in addition to the pandemic concern, you know, really twofold. As I read, and I'm not sure if this is out of our ordinance or what I'm looking at, where it's 3-1-12, it implies, you know, we have this special permit concept. And I like that concept simply because, number one, we don't want, you know, ice cream trucks or any other sort of food truck coming in and taking business away from the businesses that we have in Riverside. If somebody wanted to open up an ice cream stand like we used to have, a sundry stand, I would hate to think that the fact that we have an ice cream truck come through every day would impair that from happening. You know, the second question I have is permitting, regulation, and, you know, any sort of tax collection. If we allow ice cream trucks to come through, how do we do that? How do we know who's permitted, who's not, who's paying their taxes to the village? You know, again, I agree with Trustee Gallegos, you know, now is not the time to allow it with the pandemic concerns. But if and when we do revisit this, you know, I'd rather support the businesses that put down roots in the village as opposed to encourage, you know, people driving through and see if they can make a few dollars off our residents.
Other comments?
Yeah, I would be fine with the ice cream trucks driving through town. So the difference would be they don't need a permit. Wouldn't that be the difference in the ordinance?
Well, the ordinances I've looked at are actually pretty restrictive. I mean, the, most places charge between $100 to $150 per truck for the permit. They, not only do they require background checks on the drivers, but they're pretty extensive background checks. I mean, they go into sexual offender things and stuff like that that transcend what a normal food truck might be because of the clientele, obvious clientele of the ice cream trucks. So there's a lot of protection built in. The, you know, one, I think, Mr. Hannan is right, one thing that we would need to look carefully at is, I mean, I don't know how much revenue these things would actually generate, to be honest, but we would have to figure out some way to make sure that we capture the appropriate, you know, the appropriate revenue for the village. But, yeah, the ordinances I've looked at are very protective.
So, yeah, I would be fine with ice cream trucks. I just, if we're going to take a look at the ordinance, want to build in some sort of time limit for how long they can be on a street?
Yeah.
They can't just park there all...
They usually have not only time limits, some have specific streets that they're not allowed on, you know, if there's like playgrounds or something like that. Usually, they're required that when they're actually doing their sales, they have to be, obviously, they have to be stopped, and the music has to stop. There are decibel restrictions so that, you know, the jangling isn't too loud. So all of that, you know, people, we're not inventing the wheel here. I mean, you know, these ordinances are out there and have been fine-tuned over the years. And I'm sure our attorneys are quite familiar with them anyway. Mr. Pollak?
Thank you. I would be in favor of looking into this more. I think by the time we got around to considering an ordinance, it'd be the end of the year, and this would be for next year. Anyway, so, and there are a lot of issues to be addressed, as you mentioned. Typical business regulations, sales tax, et cetera. So, yeah, I would be in favor of pursuing this, considering it.
Yeah, I think that's a realistic timeline. I don't foresee us being able to do this, you know, for the summer.
So from a nostalgic perspective, yeah, it'd be fantastic to have the Good Humor Truck come back through. But I think that, two things, I'm really focused on COVID-19 and the safety of people. I think that that's a temporary concern, much like it was with the bike helmets. But I think that from a business perspective, when I think about Aunt Diana's or Empanada's or the opportunity to bring in a potential ice cream shop, which I think Riverside would be perfect for, I'd prefer to focus on the existing businesses right now and trying to help them get through this. Selling Patty bars versus nutty buddies.
I think we should take a look at it. I don't know which way I would go on it, but I'd like to see an ordinance on it.
So it sounds like we're pretty, I mean, it sounds like we all have similar concerns, but that we're at least willing to take a look at an ordinance. And this won't be anytime soon. I mean, sometime later this summer, we'll get to it. Okay, thank you for that. And our last item for discussion tonight is a discussion of flag display request. Mr. Gallegos?
Thank you, Mr. President. This September marks the anniversary of 9/11, a time in history when all Americans promised to never forget. I am asking our Village Board to recognize this day and our first responders. They are the brave men and women who ran into the line of fire to save the people at the Pulse nightclub. They are the brave men and women who sheltered thousands as bullets rained down from the Mandalay Hotel in Vegas. They are the brave men and women who protected a Black Lives Matter movement in Dallas, losing five of their finest. They are the brave men and women who ran into the Sandy Hook School to stop a school shooter. They are the brave men and women who stopped an Oregon District mass shooter in seconds. And with images still engraved in many of our minds, they were the first responders when the Twin Towers were attacked. A time again where all Americans promised to never forget. It is for these reasons and countless others, I am asking the Village Board, my fellow trustees, to fly a flag for first responders for the month of September. That's my statement, but I'd like to add more. Over the last two days, my trustees and I have received a number of emails suggesting that the flag that I suggested, the first responders' flag, and likened to the Blue Lives Matter flag, were statements of white supremacy, racism, and bigotry. I do not find those images to be congruent, and I happen to be a minority. So if anyone has an issue with those flags, they can take those up with me directly, and I will defend those flags for the true meaning for which they were intended. Having said that, it is only a suggestion that I have. And I'm sure that my fellow trustees have their own thoughts and suggestions, which is why we have discussions. So, Mr. President, let's open that up for discussion.
I guess the first thing I would just ask, is there any, is there anyone who would be in support of doing this?
One, I mean, I think the, you know, and I've said in responding to emails, I don't, I don't think that it is appropriate to fly any flag or symbol that anyone views as having a racist connotation. And the rule that I like to live by, that, you know, if somebody tells you they find something racist, you know, you accept that as is. But, you know, if there's an alternative flag or some way to show support to our first responders, you know, I sort of, when I saw this on the agenda, looked back at, you know, what our first responders were asked to do during the rioting. I mean, that was a spontaneous Sunday. You know, our firefighters, our paramedics, our police, you know, rose to the occasion, came up with a plan on the fly to close down the streets, and they really do their part to make this, the residents of this village, you know, feel extremely safe. I don't think the flag being proposed, given its co-opting by hate groups, you know, I think if we are going to send a message in support of first responders, it needs to be a clean message about our first responders. So if there is an alternative flag to be flown, you know, I think that would be worthwhile, but, you know, given sort of the, you know, the ways that this particular flag or similar flags like this have been used in, you know, hate marches, I don't think that particular flag is appropriate.
Manager Francis just reminded me, we do have, we have, I think, two or three public comments that we received. Four, not counting Ms. Archer's, right? Not counting Ms. Archer?
I still can't hear.
Not counting Ms. Archer. How many do we have other than Ms. Archer?
Three.
Okay, if you could read those three, please? These are comments that people sent in wanting to be read tonight on this issue.
So we have an email from Mary Comparata. "Good morning. I noticed there was an item, flag display request on..."
Can everybody hear? You're gonna have to really try to, if you can. Or you want to give them to me, and I can try read them? You're gonna use your mom voice?
I just have a loud voice. "I noticed there was a new item, flag display request, on the agenda for Thursday's meeting. Rumor has it that it is regarding flying the red-blue flag, supporting fire and police. The Blue Lives Matter flag has been associated with racism and white supremacy. I do not think we need to fly that flag in Riverside. I am against this. Thank you for your service. I look forward to reading more about this agenda item." Mary Comparata. Next is from, you're saying the names, right? The names were to be read?
Unless they say they are.
Do I need to scan this? Lindsey Morrison. "Ms. Haley, I appreciate this opportunity to submit public comment virtually during this pandemic. I hope you and yours are healthy. To the trustees, board, president, and Riverside community, I am writing to express my strong opposition to displaying the flag that has become known as the blue-line, red-line flag. I'm against any department of the village displaying it at any point, especially in light of the nation's growing awareness of the systemic racial injustice. Most of the nation wants to actively work for justice, including many people here in the community, standing up against injustice and acting to end it. This flag is an intensely divisive symbol at a time when we need unity. Why not this symbol? In spite of its original intention to honor first responders who have died in the line of duty, it is a symbol that has been co-opted by white supremacists. It is used to illustrate hatred of people of color, support of racial injustice. It is used to intimidate people already suffering from unequal treatment, treatment often coming from those sworn to serve and protect all people and people elected office. This symbol is in direct conflict with the village's welcoming resolution that resolves that the Village of Riverside celebrates and encourages diversity and a spirit of inclusion among its residents and visitors, and will continue to advance the principles of freedom, equality, and justice for all. Regarding divisiveness, in the community of Riverside, the relationship between residents and first responders is primarily positive, even if there may be ways to improve. Flying this flag would be absolutely detrimental to this positive relationship and our ability to work together to strengthen the community. The chief of the Montgomery County Maryland Department said just last fall that the flag provides a symbol of support to some, but it is a symbol of dismissiveness to others. Because it is divisive, the flag will not be posted in the 5th district nor any public space within the police department. The San Francisco Police Chief banned the symbol on uniforms, stating that it is divisive and disrespectful to people protesting racial injustice and police brutality. Many first responder departments have policies against officers expressing political opinions while in uniform. This symbol is now a divisive political opinion for much of the county, country. I do not believe that our village government wants to create confrontation and conflict here. Our elected officials and first responders are committed to their job of serving the community, and the community is committed to working with our elected leaders and first responders to make an improvement in the world we live in. Why would we make that harder for all of us? This flag has no place receiving official support from our village government. Thank you, Lindsey Morrison." From Melissa Pleasant. "There is a rumor flying that one of the trustees has requested permission to display a Blue Lives Matter flag outside our village hall or in village property. I do not think this is appropriate at all and strongly oppose it. Unfortunately, both the Blue Lives Matter movement and/or the All Lives Matter movement have become synonymous with hatred and the promotion of racism. I do not think that is the message we want to send the community and would be extremely saddened if it was. Additionally, I believe, if memory serves me from my childhood, the ice cream trucks were banned in several municipalities out of concern for children's safety after a string of accidents nationwide involving children in ice cream trucks or children in cars as they ran into the street after the ice cream truck. Something to keep in mind as you debate that issue as well. Regards, Melissa." Could I comment? I go back to what Lance said about the chalking, that the problem with regulations is when it's content-based. And so this entire discussion, to me, I would be in favor of an ordinance that says we fly no flags on our flagpole. we fly no flags on our flagpole, other than the American flag and the Illinois flag, because we get into these types of discussion of, what does it mean to you? What does it mean to me? I'm offended by it. I'm not offended by it. And so I would propose we have an ordinance that we do not fly flags.
Other comments? Mr. Pollak?
Thank you, President Sells. It's evident from the emails that we've received and the messages we've received from the community that this particular flag, in the court of public opinion at least, is controversial. And I don't think anyone can deny that, that the general public opinion about this particular flag is controversial. It's, to some, at the very least, it's ambiguous as to its meaning. And given that, I think our police officers and our firefighters deserve a more unequivocal show of support, one that is unambiguous and that is clear that the community supports them. So in that regard, then, I would, I would not be in favor of showing our support through the flying of this particular flag.
Thank you. Ms. Evans?
The flag being proposed is derivative of the Blue Lives Matter flag, which is nationally, which has become a national symbol of racism, hatred, and bigotry. So, no, I do not wish for the village to fly the flag under any circumstances.
I think that Trustee Galagos' intentions were, were, were to support the, the first responders. I think that it's been somewhat misconstrued, but I also think that right now, with, with things going on in the world, we need to be very careful about what we do and, and how we promote things. So I would be open to a alternative, you know, we love our first responders, right? Something, something that celebrates them, but I also agree with the idea of, maybe it should just be the American flag on that flagpole, and find an alternative space for people to express their, their voice for, for other initiatives and, or other things in their lives. I, I hadn't thought about that, quite frankly, and, and it was interesting to hear that. It made me reflect. I actually think I need more time to think about it.
I just think that, I don't like getting into discussions of what I approve of.
Yeah.
So what I wanted to bring everybody back to is, when this whole flag thing started, and, and to recall this idea of a limited public forum, and the fact that you, you can't choose the, what to fly or who to, who to use it based on content, it's also equally true, and this is how you created the flag policy when the rainbow flag was, a majority of the board wanted to fly it, what, the reason you could do that without the, the limited public, creating a limited public forum, is that government has the right to speak. And so, for example, when the various military things were going on, you saw the Iraq war, municipalities across the country passed, withdraw U.S. forces from Iraq, or we support our forces, and those were all, that's all speech. That's not regulating what someone else says. It's the elected officials speaking what they think. And so this policy, what Trustee Galagos presented, was presenting it to the board, and that's why it was presented that way. But the other side of that is, when you do express an opinion, you know, you invite a contrary one, and, and so it, it is controversial. But before, the board wanted to get into this a little bit, and now maybe you're rethinking
I'm certainly not rethinking it. The whole concept of free speech with, from a governmental entity is precisely that. We speak for the residents. We are elected to be their voice and to portray their values and to speak on their behalf. In my mind, the rainbow flag and the flag that's being suggested tonight could not possibly be more convergent. They are not remotely in the same vein. The provenance of the flag that's being suggested is clear. There is no question that it derives from the flag that is now associated with the Blue Lives Matter movement. That was, also no question that that was created in reaction to the Black Lives Matter movement. So there's nothing about this flag that is not divisive. So for that reason, for that part, I think the flag is inappropriate. Going back to the other part, though, however, with regard to our first responders, I would just remind everyone that we just had a Fourth of July parade that specifically was designed to allow people to honor our first responders. We have an annual September eleven remembrance that we do with joint fire and police departments every year. Something that I've been thinking about before this came up with regard to the whole, in, in the context of the broader COVID experience, is there actually is a national holiday, a National First Responders Day, that was put through Congress by Elizabeth Warren and Tom Cotton, of all, let's talk about strange partners, but they did this, and it's every October twenty-eighth. So that would be yet another opportunity where we could have, as was mentioned by Mr. Hannan and, and Mr. Pollak, an unambiguous statement about what we're actually talking about. Because I think the respect that we all feel for our, our first responders is pretty much universal within Riverside. But I think that, that the flying of this flag would actually be a denigration of their service, so I also would oppose it. So it seems to me that there is no support for, for flying this flag. So that, that's the consensus of the board. Those of you who are here are still welcome to speak if you wish, but you've heard what's actually gonna happen. So, would anyone like to address this?
Do I need to keep this on while I speak?
Let's see how loudly you can speak.
Okay. So my name's Audrey Santora. This is a statement written by Simone and Shayla Russell, two twin African-American RB graduates who have been pretty active in the community recently. Hello and good evening. The fact that hanging up the Blue Lives Matter flag is even being considered is an insult to us as Black women. It makes us feel unwelcome in our own community. This flag silences Black voices in this town. Institutions always stress how they don't want to be too biased, too political, or choose one side, yet here we are discussing a flag that was obviously only created to retaliate the Black Lives Matter movement. The Blue Lives Matter flag was created in 2014, but the United States has had police departments since 1845. Why do people feel the need to honor cops now? They've been around for a while. This flag is clearly an attempt to cover up systemic racism and police brutality. Only when the attention is on Black people do people say things, but what about everyone else? On the Fourth of July, no one says, but all countries matter. On Veterans Day, no one says, but all Americans matter. On Father's Day, no one says, but mothers matter too. Unlike the Black Lives Matter movement, with these examples, the general public does not try to invalidate them by mentioning or including another group of people. Right now, and since the beginning of time, it is undeniable that Black people and other minorities are failed, targeted, and wronged by this country and its systems. Even if you don't mean to be racist by flying this flag, you have to admit and address that this flag has had racially charged motivations and supporters with the sole intent to tear down the Black Lives Matter movement. If you truly claim this is just an act to honor the police and not disrespect the minorities in this community, then you should simultaneously fly the Black Lives Matter flag along with other representative flags for minorities. You can't blame us for getting riled up about this, since this is a predominantly white town, and we as minorities already feel left out in many ways. It is rare of this town to celebrate minorities and stress the fact that they care about us, so imagine how after all of this, it would feel to us if you hang up this flag. If we didn't feel welcomed before, we definitely would not feel welcome now. If you don't understand anything else, at the very least, you should understand that the timing of this call to fly the Blue Lives Matter flag is inappropriate, insensitive, distasteful, and implies that it is racially motivated. If you truly believe that all lives matter, then you would take the time to understand the Black individuals in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can you, can you do the sanitizing up? All right, thank you.
Hello, my name is Aaron Palmer. Personally, I'm a person of color. My dad is Black, my mother is white, and I'm a mixed human being, I guess. This is a statement my brother has written. He's also mixed. He's a senior at Western Illinois, studying politics and marketing. Flying the Blue Lives Matter flag will make Black people feel unwelcome in their own community. Whether you reform something slightly does not mean you change the underlying message. To people of color, this flag represents hatred and ignorance of their own experiences in life. To many, seeing this flag waved is no different than seeing the Confederate flag, a sign of hatred and oppression. The Blue Lives Matter movement is a movement based on the belief that, that police and dealing with, are dealing with an increasingly unsafe job. In 2014, after NYPD officers Rafael Ramos and Wajian Liu were killed, Joe and Patrice and other former active officers began, the movement began this movement. They make it clear in the history section of their website that the lives of Officer Ramos and Liu are not the main reason they started this movement. Instead, they chose to focus on, in the history section, the Black Lives Matter movement and the media as a motivating factors for the creation of this group. The first thing in their history is discussing the murder of Michael Brown. Michael Brown was a Black eighteen-year-old who, defending himself as a policeman grabbed him from inside a car, a police car, grabbed the gun, which was being pointed at him, and then attempted to run, not with the gun, but attempted to run, and when shots were fired at him fleeing, he turned around with his hands up and was murdered. Even ignoring the fact the flag was flown by white supremacists during Charlottesville protests, it's not hard to see why Black and Indigenous people and other people of color feel uncomfortable seeing this flag in their own neighborhood. Black Lives Matter was started after George Zimmerman was found not guilty of murdering Trayvon Martin. Alicia Garza, Patrice Couillures, and Opal Tometi knew that the United States was silent whenever justice was needed for Black people. Blue Lives Matter claims the same thing is happening to them. According to the FBI in 2016, sixty-six officers were killed, deliberately while doing their job compared to the 1,093 people they killed the same year. Two hundred fifteen were Black. By publicly supporting the Blue Lives Matter movement, Riverside would not be supporting police officers, but instead supporting misinformation and making its own citizens feel uncomfortable and unwelcome. By flying this flag that represents this movement, Riverside is choosing to ignore the experience of Black people everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone? Can you guys hear me? Okay. Well, I'm Devin. I've been working with these fabulous people for the Black Lives Matter thing. And one thing, can I, like, take this off? I can't really breathe. To me, as a Black person in this whole town, seeing this whole board meeting and go through, I know Mr. G. over there loves the police. I'm not gonna, like, argue, like, that's his opinion, and we have different opinions, and we have to respect that, but we can't have this, like, you know, mob mentality where everybody should attack him and attack his family for what he does. And, you know, we have to come together and find a, you know, an argument has two sides. You got a positive, you got a negative. At the end of the day, you need to find an equilibrium in the whole argument. So let's, for example, if I was a Black family who lost tons and tons of, you know, family members to the police, and I saw that flying in my village, how would I feel? Well, a person of not colored or somebody else would be like, oh, well, they're just supporting the police and everything. But I would have a different opinion where I'm just like, yo, my family got killed by these people. Like, I, I don't, like, really mess with these people. Like, they killed my family and my brothers and sisters. And how we could celebrate, like, what you guys said, we got separate days, nine eleven, we got Veterans Day, we got every, it's Fourth of July, we got every other day this I'll light police and everything else. I just personally, excuse my language, but it's a big F-U to, like, fly the flag at this moment and time of history. Like, it's just like, we're protesting, and then you gotta fly that up there. It's gonna make, you, you think, like, you're gonna, like, calm it down, but you're just making people go up and up, where you're gonna get, like, more Karens than you really want. So you want to work with the minorities of this town and the towns around them to hear what they have to say before we cause something, a bigger problem that we don't want. And see, hearing me from this house, some people say I'm not Black enough to, you know, talk about the situation. I grew up privileged, and I have some family members who aren't privileged like I am. I'm lucky to go to, went to RB. I'm lucky to have great, you know, I have a great job. I'm a Riverside caddy. I'm just lucky to be privileged, but to see my brothers and sisters struggle, like, where my aunt, when she first came in this town from Texas, she was scared because our neighbors were just looking at her funny, because they didn't know who she was, but they were, like, following her. And then one thing that really ticked me off was one of my neighbors said, so my mom and I were out in the garden, and we're helping. My white father, stepdad, and they said, oh, do you live here? And my mother stood up, and she's like, excuse me? We've been living here for five years. Two seventy-one South Coat Road, ma'am. And she's like, oh, I thought you were just helping him. See, that's where we gotta draw the line of, there needs to be more raisins in the suns, and with the whole cop situation, I think the cops need to have implicit bias training. It's not just cops are killing Black people, they're killing everybody, and we need to work, like I said, we need to work together to solve this issue, so we don't take two steps forward and then go two steps back, and we're just back at square one. We don't need that. We need to go forward as a community, and then later down the years, I could say, I'm proud to raise kids in this lovely community, instead of, oh, I leave this community because this community is filled of hatred or just neglect, and I don't want that for anybody else. I love this community with my heart. I just have some issues, but I feel like, you know, humans make mistakes, and we could clean up our mistakes. They said Generation Z is the generation to change everything, you know? Someone's going out there saying something really blatant offensive, just, you know, correct them. It's simple like that. That's all I gotta say. I'm just saying, we could work this together. You know, a house divided by itself cannot stand, and pretty much a country divided by itself cannot stand at all. We need to be unified. We are the United States of America, the land of opportunities. We are not the communist regime of China. We're not just all the same. We are different, but we need to come together and be one.
Thank you. So, actually, I'm glad Devin just said that, because he reminded me that I did have something else in my president's report that I forgot to mention. So we had mentioned, I had mentioned a few weeks ago that we were gonna be putting together an extended conversation about policing in Riverside. That is going to take place on August the sixth. It's a community conversation on policing in Riverside. It's gonna be a panel that comprises our chief of police, Tom Weitzel, our deputy chief, Bill Kuchik, and our lieutenant Frank Lara. I will be the moderator of the event. We're going to ask people, because of the COVID concerns, we're gonna ask people to send in questions ahead of time. There will, of course, be an opportunity at the conversation to ask questions at that time, but we're gonna try to, if there are common questions, we'd like to get those answered up first, so that we can have more time for a broader-ranging discussion with our command staff from our police department. So the August sixth, it's basically, it's in lieu of our village board meeting, so that will allow the trustees then to, to attend also. So it'll be at seven o'clock in this room on August sixth, conversation, community conversation on policing in Riverside. on policing in Riverside. So, with that, is there any new business?
President Sells, if you could just make, make a comment. You know, I, I, again, applaud the young people for coming out here and, and raising awareness. You know, I, I would suggest that the history lesson, you know, go back a little farther. My father was very active in, in community banking on the South Side. You know, I'm proud to say that he went down to Rainbow Bush, Rainbow Push Coalition meeting and spoke alongside Reverend Jesse Jackson on community banking, removal of redlining. So, I wanna give that background on these statements. You know, to, to be upset that somebody raised an issue or raised a proposal at a village board, I don't think it's fair to attack that. That's the whole reason why we have a village board meeting. We're a deliberative body. We have an open and transparent form of government. You know, what was raised here as a way to support the police, during the course of the discussion, during the course of public comment, during the course of the, of the emails we received, it was apparent that that flag was not appropriate. And I think, when you listen to this village board meeting, you see that that's the consensus we came to. So, you know, I think as people look back at what we did, it's not appropriate to say the village is trying to fly this flag. The village had a discussion on this flag, and the village at the board had a thoughtful discussion on this flag is not appropriate because of the various uses that it's had. You know, we can debate its intent, where it originally came from, but the fact is, it's been co-opted, and it's now not a pure symbol, so it's not appropriate to do. But please appreciate the deliberative body that we have and what we do, and merely because something is proposed, doesn't mean that there's a sinister agenda behind this. Under the Opens Meeting Act, this is the only time that the trustees can get together to discuss these issues, to discuss proposals, in the same way you saw with the ice cream truck, in the same thing you saw with the pride flag several months ago. This is where we have the discussion. And so, I don't want anyone walking away, "I'm offended that this issue came up." If issues didn't come up, if no one was willing to push the boundaries, if no one was willing to come out and say, "I wanna fly the pride flag," notwithstanding two years before I suggested this, there was a movement to take it down, we'd never have change. So, you know, I think it's important that we continue to be deliberative, that all the trustees not be afraid to propose an idea, and that you realize that this body is to discuss ideas and to come conclusions, and tonight we came to the right conclusion. So, please keep that in mind as you reflect back on what we did today.
Ms. Evans?
I understand what trustee Hannan is saying. I also would like to just say, as a trustee, I feel a sense of responsibility prior to bringing something to the board, as far as researching, you know, what it is that I want to propose. Could it be a harmful idea? Could it be harmful just having it on the agenda to discuss? I do think we have a responsibility of doing a little bit of research before putting it out, you know, on the agenda. You know, it doesn't have to, every conversation doesn't have to start at the board meeting.
Any new business for this evening?
Hearing none, we do not have a need for an executive session, so I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Gallegos. Second, Ms. Collins, please call the roll.
Trustee Collins. Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion passes. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you and good night.
Chad.
I love you, sir.